Okay, good morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the Saturday, August 7th, 2021 study session meeting of Board of Education, August 7th, 2021. The time is 9:01 a.m. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Fruto Superintendent.
Please rise. Put your hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Viviana, will you call roll, please? Governing Board Member Garcia?
Present.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Present.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Present.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Present.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta?
Present.
Thank you, Viviana. The next item of business is the approval of the study session meeting agenda, August 7th, 2021. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion to approve study session meeting agenda, August 7th, 2021.
Thank you. May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none with the motion by Board Member Gomez and a second by Board Member Martinez. Viviana, will you call roll, please? Governing Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Governing Board Member De Leon?
Yes.
Governing Board Member Cuarenta? Yes, motion carries by zero or motion passes. The next item of business is public hearing. Persons wishing to address the board should fill out a blue card located on the table by the door and submit the card to the secretary. Speakers will be called in sequence during the hearing section, which is limited to each speaker to one presentation of three minutes. The board cannot engage in public discussion during the portion of the agenda. Staff will follow up and address public inquiries if contact information is provided. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson to address the board. Persons wishing to address the board on a specific agenda item at the time the item is under discussion are limited to three minutes each and will be called to speak following the staff comments and prior to the board's discussion and taking action. Do we have any speakers, Viviana?
For President Cuarenta, we do not have any speakers today.
Thank you for the update, Viviana. The next item of business is superintendent's informational update. We will be getting a return to school update.
Thank you, Board President Cuarenta. Good morning, Board members. Thank you for joining us. Today, we have two brief updates that actually are going to evolve a bit from what we originally intended. We expected that the Health Department would give us some additional information yesterday. However, it will come next Thursday. And as I mentioned to the Board of Education, the Health Department continues to monitor the evolution of these variants that are causing some challenges in many states. We heard last night in one of their updates that Florida is in a very unfortunate condition. So what I will be recommending to the board after next week's update is that we revisit what our different options are. As you know, right now, we have two options that we will be discussing in a bit more detail at the next item is return full in person with masks, option one. Option two, independent study, and the independent study obviously will be done via computer with contact with teachers. And we have divided the model based on grades TK3 for 5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. I am going to mention to the board the possibility of having a backup option, which is if things go bad, that we are prepared once again for distance learning. I, it is unfortunate that I'm bringing that to you, but the least thing that we want to do is be unprepared. We've been working on all this for a long time. Let me read you the update on return to school information so that you have the latest information that we have from the federal government. On Wednesday, August 4th, U.S. Secretary of Education urged students to return to classrooms. U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona said, "Schools need to bring students back to classrooms. That's where students learn best," he said. "Schools are more than just places where students learn how to read, write. They are communities. They are like second families to our students," unquote. The U.S. Department of Education released a roadmap for returning to school, recommending that schools focus on socio-emotional learning and the acceleration of academic achievement. The state of California has prioritized a full return to in-person learning for the 2021-22 school year. This will require the continued use of masks and modify physical distancing requirements, which was a major impediment for a full return to school. In Paramount Unified School District, implementing a safe return to in-person instruction for all of us is a priority from the state. We are encouraged about increases in LA County vaccination rates and yet remain cautious about COVID-19, as I mentioned, due to the variants. Vaccination remains a leading prevention strategy to address the spread of COVID-19. And as we've stated before, school procedures will look different than pre-pandemic, and they will be based upon the California Department of Public Health, California Department of Education, and LA County Public Health Guidelines. Why are we saying this, Board members? Well, if you remember, the mandate actually says that masks are only mandated indoors. As we told the community on Thursday, we are recommending and we will enforce unless the board tells me otherwise that when we start the year, we also wear masks outside as a prevention mechanism. So it's the first thing. Remember, today, we don't take action, but I want to make sure that I look at the board members. If any of you have a question or an objection to us saying masks outside, now is the time to discuss it. After meeting with the Health Department, they provided no guidance on this. So we are taking one step further as we've done before. Any questions from the board?
Just have a question.
Please, Ms. Gomez.
For the mask outside, I know, and it's a great idea. However, these students already have the mask on all day in class. So a break for them, I think, would be good. But then yet, I understand that the students 12 years and under have not gotten vaccinated. So I don't know how the other board members feel, but I think that the kids need a break from the mask because having a mask the whole day, that's a lot. So I'm for letting them have a break. I guess it's recess or break time outside, and especially when they eat, they have to take it off too. But I think having the mask the whole day for a little one, it's rough.
I agree with you, Carmen. I believe, I mean, having that face mask on for six hours and the students will be outdoors. So maybe we can make it an option. If students want to keep their masks on, fine. If they want to take it off, it's fine.
I think that our kids will be, will have had enough of that mask during the time in class. And also during recess, though, Ruben, will they be separating the times? So like, will each classroom go out at a separate time? So they're already going to be with the same students?
That's what they're working on right now, what we're calling staggered lunches, which are different lunches for different grades. We also provided, as the board members heard last week, 20 additional lunch tables for every school, which, as you know, sit several students. So that's the goal, is they work on the schedule. With the board's directive today of unmasking outdoors, we will be working then on that this week to make sure that all the schools are informed. A meeting with the principals on Monday morning to give them the information that the board gives me today so that we're all up to date. So to repeat what the board said, the board's directive is that masks indoors obviously are a mandate. We can't change that. But outdoors, we will allow the students to unmask, certainly during lunch. That wasn't an option for us. They were going to take the mask off, but also during recess and other times at their discretion. So what we are going to say is that parents have the right to tell their kid, even when you walk outside, you can remain masked. However, during lunch, or optional, they can take it off outdoors.
Yeah.
Is that what the board is? Okay, I appreciate that. I will put it in writing and send it back to the Board of Education as an email with other directives from today.
Yeah, and I want to thank Carmen, I'm sorry, Board Member Gomez for bringing it up. I also want to thank Board Member Martinez for a key word, bringing forward a keyword choice, right? Giving the kids a choice. I think that's very important. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to read it one more time to make sure that the board is happy with. Would we present students? Our board directive is masks off outside during recess and lunch, optional, and provide the choice that parents can make for masking outdoors. Excellent. Thank you very much, Board members. That concludes the first item. The second part of the same item, I just wanted to read you more updates so that the board is well informed. The health and safety measures provided over the last few days include a term called layers of mitigation. The California Department of Public Health issued new guidance for K-12 schools in July 2021. The new guidance applies to the 21-22 school year, and it includes any youth activity that continues to follow the K-12 guidance for the school year. For us, that means any ECE programs, ACES, and all our partner programs that work with the school district. Since the beginning of the pandemic, Paramount Unified has implemented multiple layers of mitigation to protect students and employees. We continuously update our health and safety measures based on the guidelines from the California and LA County Public Health Departments. Currently, our health and safety protocols include masks and distancing according to the Public Health Guidelines, and now that modification of outdoors, health screening, frequent hand washing encouraged, and we have stations throughout the district, cleaning and disinfecting protocols, which have evolved, not to use too many chemicals that the children can touch, so high-touch surfaces, MERV and HEPA filters in all classrooms and workspaces, voluntary asymptomatic testing. You remember, that's what we explained the other day, the swaps that we will, we have in place, and quarantine isolation, contact tracing, and notification protocols in partnership with the Health Department. Those will remain in place as we return to school. And again, next Thursday, we'll get new protocols. So if anything changes, we'll immediately let the board know. Any questions regarding the update on return to school?
No, Ruben, the people that will be doing the swap test, are they going to be somebody from the county?
I'm sorry?
The ones that will be doing the swap testing on the children? Because I've never had one, but I have heard people, some of them that have had that swap test, that they, some of them put it way back in their nose to make them choke practically into their throat. And then there's other ones that just kind of swap it. I'm just concerned with the students getting injured with that swap.
And that's a very good question, Ms. Garcia. For us, we have two types of employees that can do it, what we call shots, which, as you know, are our employees that serve under the nurses, providing all the health needs at our schools and the nurses. So they're all trained on what to do. And my understanding, because I just had it done recently, it literally just touches inside, and then it's put in a little, it looks like a transparent little tube, and then it goes, and you get back the results, and you feel better. So that concern about going up would be the equivalent of a bad test that somebody would do.
Exactly. And then when that happens, you're going to have parents.
We don't want to trust anything, anyone besides our health personnel. And if, in addition to that, eventually it becomes pervasive, meaning that we have to do it more often or with everyone, the nurses would train additional staff, like in special ed, in other areas where we have more contact, to do the test. But I will bring it up to the nurses again to make sure that they reiterate to their entire team that the swap is not supposed to go afar.
Right.
Exactly. Thank you. Thank you. And Viviana, can you make note of that? And I will make sure that once we talk to the nurses, we send an email to the board that that conversation has taken place.
I do have a question on the voluntary system testing. Our last meeting on Thursday, there was a lot of questions regarding consent forms. I understand that it's voluntary and has to have parent approval. However, is the, is the, is the consent form once a year? Is it weekly? How is the parent going to be notified? Or I just need to know if it's weekly that they're going to have the consent form, or every six months, yearly?
At this point, Ms. Gomez, the guidance that we got from the Health Department is to do it once at the beginning of the year, and we would revisit when they tell us. Because remember, the movement is also shifting in the direction of mandatory testing. So that's why they told us, we're not going to be asking every week. At the beginning of the year, the parent gives consent, and we can continue testing while we're authorized to do it. It could be the entire year. So that's why we do it once. We will continue to tell parents that have opted out, if it becomes more pervasive or eventually mandatory, we will need to communicate with our community regularly to let them know what the latest guidelines are with testing. You will get concerns, and I'm sorry, Ms. Garcia, you will get concerns from folks that we're only doing it once weekly. It is what the majority of the school districts are doing, and it's one of the conversations and questions that we're all bringing to the Health Department next week. Are we allowed? And is it recommended to do it more than once a week? Just wanted you to know that didn't go on the test. Yeah. So that is a question, I think, that most districts are asking the Health Department, what is the correct amount of testing? The contract that the board allowed me to enable can do as many as we need.
Okay. So when a parent signs that contract, if they decide or choose to opt out during, like, let's say, after a month, they said, oh, I don't want my child any longer, they can opt out?
Absolutely. And again, those are the kind of things that our nurses and our health offices in every school can handle. If a parent said, I opted in for the testing, suddenly I have a reversal of opinion, they can opt out. We can do that. What we won't do is regularly ask. Once we ask once, it is a permissible service.
I have one other question.
Please.
For our Matsevier population, do we have a special nurse for them? Because I know some of them have different disabilities. You know, some can't hear, some can't use their hands, some can't. And we really need to look at that population because we don't know how this is going to affect them when, if the parent says, yes, whether, I mean, I know the parent probably should be there at the time that they do it, but we really need to look at what are the, what are the procedures for them? Because that is a special population that we really, really need to look at.
And I appreciate it, Ms. Garcia. Board members, what I will do, since we're meeting with the nurses next week, I will ask them to give me feedback as to how they intend to address the needs of our Matsevier students. We will write it on a Wednesday update for the board so that you have it in writing, and you know what we're doing.
And is there any, because I have heard from different parents on Matsevier, is there any possibility? Well, there is a possibility, but I would like to see something writing on the website for them regarding, like, the mask mandate? Because I believe most of them probably would not want it. So what will, what will the district be doing if they don't use them? And also, like I mentioned, for the vaccinations, I mean, not vaccinations.
And not a problem. Let me recap, Board members. So for voluntary testing, we will bring you any information on changes for parent approval. For Matsevier, we will ask the nurses if they are going to have special services and the procedures for testing and any other needs prior to return to school in the Wednesday update. In addition to that, on the web, I will ask our new director of special ed, Rochelle, that she updates what the procedures will be for special education students, like they are for Janet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on return to school, Board members?
Mr. Frutos, I just kind of want to piggyback on the question that Board Member Garcia had about the swap testing. Did we do that during the summer session, and was it successful?
You know, we did not do it because, one, it wasn't required, and, two, we did not have a contract at that time. It took a while to get a company that was approved by the Health Department, because these were companies recommended from Laco and the Health Department. So what I can ask is if they had circumstances, the nurses have the capacity to do it. Since I'm going to meet with them, I'm going to ask them if they did any testing independently, which they can do, and if they had any results. I'm happy to ask that question, but not a, not a contract like we have.
The only thing that they did do during the summer session is that every parent, every morning, had to fill out a survey online.
Yes.
And I think, like my daughter, kind of says, okay, come on, you know? But they did make parents do that.
And that continues, because if you recall, thank you, Ms. Garcia, that is something that we continue. And the reason, if you remember at the beginning, the temperature check was supposed to be the measure as to whether somebody was infected or not. And it very quickly became apparent when there was that amazing amount of contacts at one of the rallies in Washington, D.C., that a lot of folks are asymptomatic, meaning, Ms. Gomez and I can walk into a place, our temperature is fine, but we are spreading the virus. So it became very clear that those bullets, even though we all do them, 100.4, a lot of folks are asymptomatic. So in a way, writing that you are okay and that you don't have symptoms is one of the mechanisms that we can use. And talk about believing in the honor system. Everyone has to put it in, and we trust each other. It is a difficult situation. Not a lot of other options in talking with the Health Department. Those are the options we have right now. So if you feel uneasy about it, I do too. We were really trusting folks to be honest and say, my child has some symptoms.
When we're going to have people to trust him, because we're going to have some parents that are working, and they're like, well, you can't stay home, even if you don't feel good, you know, you got to go to school. And that's going to be a concern.
That's a concern for me, and I'm sure it's a concern for you. And again, those are the questions that we keep asking the Health Department. And I can tell you, they also don't have a solution, because unless we quiz every child, and they might say, I feel okay, when they are somewhat symptomatic, there is very little we can do to check if somebody is infectious without doing a test. And even those tests, they're not immediate, like you swap it, plop it somewhere, and change its color. They are sent because of the variety of RNA information that needs to be read. So yes, let's all agree, we are concerned about that. I agree with you, Board members.
I do have one other question.
Please.
I know we talked about it in past few months, about having a COVID dashboard. I understand that other districts have it, and we've also brought examples of other districts that do have it in prior meetings. I would like to see a dashboard on there, at least, at least per school, at least, just not, not to mention the student's name, because of course, we can't, but how many cases are positive and how many cases, you know, like, how many tested, we tested, how many were negative, how many are positive? You know, something, because I look at other districts, and I'm like, well, their websites, you know, and we're kind of behind on that. So I would like to see that happen.
I'll be happy to bring an update and work on developing a dashboard this week. And depending on the information, I do want to check with the Health Department what's allowable to be posted and not. And we'll have an update for you this week about progress on it.
I believe Myrna Morales was working on that too, so if you want to check with her.
I will be happy to.
Thank you.
Mr. Frutos, I have a question. I know the parents were asking on Thursday, is staff going to be tested? I know it's voluntary for the students, but what's the procedure to reiterate for, for staff and teachers?
I can tell you, Mrs. De Leon, that my preference would be that everyone on staff is tested. What I'm going to be asking this week from LA County Legal, we actually made an appointment a few districts to meet with, with Laco Legal, to see if we can enforce testing for all employees. We also have a bargaining session that I have, not to negotiate, but to discuss protocols on Tuesday with both unions at the same time. So I can tell you, my emphasis will be what can we do to assure that all our employees are tested? And the reason why I'm talking to Laco is that they're the lead agency. If they tell us you can enforce it, I'm coming right back to you and say, I want to enforce this. Will you allow me the authority to do that? Because the board needs to give me direction on that. At this point, I'm not sure that legally I can enforce it. So I will check that and come back to you. Some districts are trying, especially the Northern California ones that have been so infected. And I already heard of a district that got an ACLU type of group suing them back, saying you cannot enforce that. And by the way, they got slapped when you cannot enforce masking either. So just be aware that you have folks on both sides on the situations. But your superintendent would like to see everyone vaccinated. I carry my card. I feel safer. I mask every time that I'm around people. I'm just unsure that anything else is safe, but I cannot make that decision you matter.
My feeling is that when a child comes, starts school, kindergarten, they have to show proof of all their vaccinations. So you know what? And that's mandatory for all those students coming in. And I think that as soon as we can get the okay, that we mandate all of our employees to get vaccinated. And if our kids are going to be tested on a weekly basis, I think that all the employees need to be tested on a weekly basis also.
And Ms. Garcia, your opinion is shared by a significant amount of population in schools. They say, I have to get vaccinated by this. How come not for this?
Right.
And it's been a question on a lot of our minds. Enforcability for the other vaccinations has remained. But as the board members know, there's an anti-vaxxer movement, and there are a lot of challenges on that, too. It's enforceable, but...
I can't understand intelligent people listening to all that propaganda. Now they're saying if you put a magnet here, it sticks on your arm from the shot. It's, I can't, I just can't believe that intelligent people think that way.
And it's, yes, as I said, as you know, there are folks on both sides. My goal this week is to get the best advice we can from Laco, because it's several districts, not just us that are asking. And I will send an update to the board as soon as we find out what our legal abilities are. Within that, let's say they give us a legal ability to enforce, I probably will ask for a quick meeting with the board and say, are you willing to direct me to enforce? Obviously, we would talk to the unions in advance so that they know that that's the direction we're seeking. Any other questions, Board members? Thank you, Mrs. De Leon.
I think the board can make a policy also, right? Because the board makes policies for the district. And I think we should make a policy once that comes down. I mean, I even, I even think we can make policy now, but as what you mentioned, I guess not. But I think we are the governing board for the district. We make policy for the district. And I think we need to make a policy.
Yes, I think once we have direction from the LA County Legal, then we can make the policy. Yes.
And I don't disagree with the board members. You might even be able to mandate it right now.
Yeah.
What I would recommend, though, is it's, it's still, the beginning of school is not for another week and a half. It's not a bad idea sometimes to get a little bit of advice, especially when fellow districts are doing the same thing. So unless you tell me otherwise, I am recommending that we move in that direction. We get legal advice so that it's enforceable, and then we come back as a group. You can make a policy. You can also just give me direction, because if we have the legal background, we can do it either way.
Okay. Now, to be clear, is this for testing?
No, for vaccination.
Okay. Because I know there's a mandate, and it's in the process of being, being legal. Because I'm just looking at LA Unified as far as COVID testing, and that's something that all students and employees, it says, all citizen employees, both vaccinated and unvaccinated, returning to in-person instruction must participate in the baseline on ongoing weekly COVID testing. So they're, they're going to have to, like, they're mandated. One last thing, a side note, is that I know things are changing, and I highly, highly recommend, instead of us telling our constituents, our parents, our staff, look at the website. We are here to service them. That's my opinion. And so I would highly recommend for us, board, to direct Mr. Frutos to have weekly announcements if anything changes. That way, and I think reading something is something that might be challenging for some folks because of time constraints. So short video, weekly updates, this is what we had last week, and now it's changed to this. And it's, it's for us to get that information, and we don't have, like, a discrepancy of, well, I heard this, but what, where is it? Do I have to read it? And I don't see it in the website. And then this way, I think it would, it's more meaningful for the community to know what's going on, that we are trying, you know, our best, and we are following the guidelines of, you know, what the Health Department is telling us, what the governor is telling us. And of course, we want everyone to be safe. That's our goal, and we want everyone to receive the best education possible under these unprecedented conditions.
I appreciate it, Mrs. De Leon. And Board members, Mrs. De Leon was very kind in giving me an advance notice of this and a little bit of a heads up of what a video can look of a heads up of what a video can look like from our colleagues in Long Beach. So I thank her. We already scheduled a video session for Monday morning with Drell, when we'll do our first update. Again, we were hoping to get a lot of direction on Thursday. It'll be next week, but at least we have all this information, which I will record and we will send the first announcement and we'll do it every week until we feel it's no longer necessary. So thanks for that, Mrs. De Leon, for the heads up on that. And it'll start on Monday. We'll probably post it on Tuesday, but it'll start on Monday.
Will that be on a, on YouTube or a pass?
We'll put it on, on our website on YouTube so that people can click and it'll be there. And the way Long Beach did it, because of the multiplicity of languages that they have when the superintendent is speaking, you can click on Spanish and I forget what the other language is. We'll do English and Spanish the same way. And by the way, board members, you had requested a certified translator on Monday night for our board meeting. It'll be the first time that a certified translator will come. Of the three companies that we have on standby, two refused to send somebody because of COVID. Right now they're mostly operating on Zoom. The third company, LA Translation, which is the largest, said that they'll have somebody, but that we will confirm it on Monday. If the person refuses to come due to COVID, I'll tell you, we'll continue with our normal translator for now. But so that you know that contract is active and now that we are back live, we will have certified, not uncertified, certified translators present here.
So is there a way to, because technology is, as it has advanced, is there a way to have like a Zoom call and then they translate and we hear that?
No, not that day because of the way the technology works from the company. We would need to do it like we did with Ms. Quarenta, give them equipment and that would mean that we need to meet them live. And that's what they're refusing to do. So we, hopefully we'll have the person live. They assured me yesterday that they'll be here. I will work with you, but regardless, we have the contract now. So whether it's this next meeting or the subsequent, we will have a certified translator. In case the board finds eventually that non-certified from the same company can work, we are enabled for both contracts. The difference in price is almost a hundred dollars an hour. So I just wanted to make sure you knew. And after we finish the first session, I will ask for feedback from the board to see if this is, if this is a service that is working well, a certified translator. So I wanted to let you know that. Any other, oh, please, Ms. Gomez.
Last, in, in our last meeting for the information, it was great to see so many people. What I've noticed is many of them who came to me at the end do not know how to use the computer, do not know how to get on to YouTube. I actually showed two of them. I said, open your phone, put PUSD and then on the side it has a YouTube. When we do return, I would like to see small groups. I know we can't have big groups of parents come so they can, so we can teach them because they, they really need the information for their students. Now, Alondra, I guess is very popular because I'm like, why don't all those people come to our meetings? Well, they probably don't know where the board, board room is. So if we do have something like that, if we can do have it at Alondra, because everybody seems to know where Alondra is. And so that I would like to see.
Piggyback off of that, and I know when we first got elected or when we were running, we talked about having board meetings at different school sites. So that's something that, you know, backwards plan maybe? And then pick a different school site so that parents.
Every month, different site. Yeah, we have so many schools. I mean, we just 12 months, 12 months in a year. We do one and, I mean, we rarely go to, to, to a Holliday, have, have one meeting in Holliday. We rarely have one in Collins. Let's go to Collins. I mean, I think we can do it. The, the, the explanation that was given at the time is that it's so hard to get all this video and stuff there. But now with technology, all schools have all this technology in the schools. I wouldn't mind going to the different locations because that would give our district to see that the board is really there for them, you know? But it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing it up.
What we have done in previous times is that we've had held meetings at the park where, where the community could come into the park. We have a amount of progress and I'm not quite sure, but we may have had one at Paramount Park. And it makes, it's more room and the community knows where the parks are at.
But I, but, but, but I, I, that's a great idea. They believe me at least to start. But I really believe that if we go to the different schools, it gives more of a community, more of the, of the people that live around there that go to our district, see that the board is really involved in making, in, in caring for each school. We do care for each school. But we're such a large area, you know, we're, we're spreading large areas that some of the schools don't realize that the board is here for them. And so I believe we should go to different schools, but to start off, yes, we can probably just do parks, but I would like to see schools.
I, I totally agree because not everyone is from Paramount. We do have students that are, or, and families that are located in the Long Beach area, in the Lakewood area. So it's not something that they just come to our part, but for us to be out there and build community, right? Know who they are. Like we know for the most part, the Lincoln parents, right? Because they're, they surround us, they come to the board meetings. But it would be nice to, you know, know the people from Southgate and their concerns because their concerns are different from, from Lincoln, from Collins and build that community. So I, I totally agree. And I know that was something in 20, or 2018 that it was talked about, but if we could move forward, that would be nice.
And, and we're here to make nice, board members. So this is what I'm proposing. If it works with you, remember this wasn't an item, agendized today, but we can talk about it. It's okay. However, what I'll do, since we have the agenda fully completed and we're within the 72 hours for Monday, I will agendize it for the September board meeting if it pleases the board. That gives us time, as Ms. Gomez said, to make sure we have all the technology in place. And if we don't have it, we can buy it because if you remember, the reason why this works for the board meetings is that you have very specialized equipment up there in the middle of the room. That doesn't travel. So that's not going anywhere. So if we do it at the size, we're going to have to procure that equipment that you see in the middle of the room, the two systems. That's what broadcasts you into that gigantic box of controls into YouTube, very doable. So my job over the next few weeks, if it's okay with the board, is to procure portable equipment that can do that because we still want to be on YouTube and we still want to be recorded. By the way, very doable. And then we'll come back to you for approval. We'll get the gear and we'll start scheduling meetings as the board desires at different locations. Is that okay with the board members?
Yes, I believe they used to do it at Al Rancho Unified School District, their school board meetings. They went to various elementary schools and it brought in the community. So I basically support that to bring in more of our parents. But I think it's a good thought. I think, you know, we can discuss it in September. But I would like to, you know, continue to have meetings here as well periodically. But I also think it's important that we go out to the schools.
We could probably alternate, alternate school, the board meeting.
And I'll contact Al Rancho. I believe there's one school board member that still serves on the board that went out to the schools. I don't think they do it anymore, but I can get info from them to see how it worked with them. Do you know of any other school districts that go out to their school communities?
My, one of my prior districts, Martinez West Covina, at least three or four times a year, they wanted to meet in different locations.
We generate more.
It was before YouTube and before recording the entire board and make sure that the sound was good. But we, we did them also to reach the community. There it was for a different reason. We had a district neighboring Walnut that was poaching our students, so we would do anything to.
Very good.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Board members, the next item that we have is an update on independent study and staffing. I wanted to give you the background and then we can start the conversation. Governor, Governor Gavin Newsom signed Assembly Bill 130 into law on July 9, 2021. The bill makes changes to independent study and some of the changes apply to all school districts. Due to the COVID pandemic, the state of California now requires that all California school districts offer an independent study option for the 21, 22 school year. For Paramount Unified, the independent study program is available for families with medical, socio-emotional and other concerns that would prevent them or limit them from being in the in-person program. The program will be available to TK 12 students. The independent study students will receive daily live online instruction for part of the day and complete independent work when not learning directly with a teacher. The program will be an independent study program as provided by the new state regulations and students will not be learning from the same teachers as their current campus. Instead, students will be participating in the learning with teachers assigned to the independent study program. Students may switch between the online independent study program and the in-person learning system at any time. This should be done selectively as it will require switching teachers. An independent study and the homeschool will work together, together on a transition plan to assist the student that's switching between independent study and in-person learning with the least amount of disruption to their learning. We must offer an independent study option to students and families and it has to be made available, especially for those students whose health would be put at risk by in-person instruction as determined by the parent or guardian. This is important. We will not be asking for medical rationale. The parent can make the decision. We may meet this requirement by contracting with the county office of education, entering into a this inter-district agreement or providing it in the district. I believe, board members, we are large enough that we can do it in-house. If we begin to have issues, let's say we have too many and we just cannot provide it. I contacted the county office of education for a potential inner district agreement for independent study with them. Why am I telling you this? We were expecting between five and 600 interested in the last few days. It very quickly climbed to 700 over the last couple of days and we will believe will be over 850 by the end of the weekend. So it's a significant amount of students. We accommodate. But if the amount keeps growing and we don't have enough staffing, we have a backup plan and that's working with Laco. Because remember it's online. So we, we could do that, especially if there's a special need for our students. I just wanted to let you know that we have a backup plan just in case. What must be provided? We must provide live and synchronous instruction. You may remember that during the meeting on Thursday, one of the parents specifically said we were too technical. In a way, there's no choice. We're mandated to tell the parents what synchronous instruction is. And what we will explain in our webinar next week is that there has to be daily live instruction, at least weekly, live, I'm sorry, daily live instruction for TK 3, at least weekly live instruction for grades four to eight, with opportunities for daily live instruction, this is the law, and weekly synchronous instruction for high school students. So the details that we received late last week will be now incorporated into our webinar. There has to also be a written learning agreement and has to be signed before a student commences an independent study course. Because the state was so late providing us guidance, they did give us one month from the start of school to finalize setting up our independent study program and the agreements that need to be done with each and every student. Any questions, board members?
So these, yes, the, the parents had up till last Friday to say if they want, you know, to do the survey. But we gave them till this coming Wednesday to fill out that survey. However, what I'm understanding here is that we, we actually have one month after to get every.
The district has a month. We have to get the number of students, staff it, and then we have one month to finish all the agreements. Because remember, every parent, if you remember the old independent study, there was a contract done by a master agreement, a staff member. They shifted a little bit. It's not really that type of master contract that we remember. It's now more like an agreement. It'll be with the parent and/or the student if they're over 18. And it'll say you must meet your instructional guidelines and you have to participate in synchronous, meaning face-to-face with the teacher, instruction for so many minutes based on your grade span. So that, they're giving us a few days because, you know, they're just telling us what we need to do. And now they, they gave us a few weeks to say, okay, parent by parent, please sign this. Because if we didn't get the extra time, imagine that a parent didn't give us the contract by the first couple of days. We would have to drop them and put them back on live instruction. What if that student's immunocompromised? So the, the begging to the state was please give us time because some of these parents might take a little while to give us back their written document.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other questions? Otherwise I'm going to go into a little bit of the technical so that the board knows what we are going to be doing. So.
Just a real, another quick question. So for the independent study, the parent actually has the full year because it's only for our school year, 2021 to 2022. Anytime during the school year, if they want their child to be independent study, they could just come to the school and ask, I want them to be an independent study.
That is the law right now and it might shift, but that is our obligation and our pledge to the students right now. Yes.
So I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. There is going to be a, like a webinar, right, to inform the parents of what is independent study? Because I know you have like asynchronous, synchronous and it's language that is hard to understand. So if we could say synchronous means online and, you know, just reiterate, but also have some, some kind of video that can be out in the social media, out at different schools, their own like webpage, at the district's webpage of what it consists of. Because what I'm looking at, the revised policy is that depending on their grade level, they'll get more asynchronous, meaning more online instruction versus a high school student. It seems like a high school student is more, more, it seems more independent, more on their own. And there is no, well, there is, but not as daily as a kindergarten versus a high school student. And I would like for, for the parents to know the difference. So there's no like, what? And, and so it's, it's tailored and to their language and it's simple. Simple language and get to the point. I think that would be helpful for our community. And I know it, it in the, before it said that they had to be an independent study for five days and now it's, it's at least three days. So if they decide to, because I know those questions were asked, well, how about if I sign my student up and then I decide to change my mind, you know, have that, have that stated, like if you change your mind, you know, according to the policy now, you have three days. So they, they would have to stay in, within three days for them to go back.
And there's also a provision that they're proposing in the law that will be enacted if you, and you will see it, about a 15-day process. Up until recently, the belief was that there was a, a switch back and forth and an official switch at any time. And now what they're saying is if you have less than 15 days in one of the systems, you, you don't necessarily have to officially change him. They can, they can go back without any challenges. And that's, I think, a nice service for those that are unsure at the beginning of the year. I, I will give you the details that we will be providing on Wednesday in a very, just in a synopsis, there'll be a lot more detail on Wednesday and it'll be done by our team that will have Greg with expertise in secondary and Renee in elementary and Mercedes. But in a nutshell, for a parent, this is what they'll hear. For TK 3, we will have to adopt our current curriculum. It'll continue to be done under School-Ache, just like we did last year for distance learning. So we're very well trained on that. Possible supplements through the H and U program, which works very well for school districts. And as Mrs. De Leon said, for TK 3, the, the time that is classroom-like instruction, meaning that the student will be seeing a teacher, is 90 minutes a day. That's the minimum. So TK 3, 90. The lifetime mandate is for 30 minutes daily. Why are we doing 90? We've had a stronger program since last year. And you, the board, should always be proud that Paramount does a little less, although we can get away with 30, we are proposing 90. The independent time for TK 3 is three hours a day for TK, K, and four hours a day for first through third. And by the way, you'll get all this in writing before Wednesday. So you're free to take notes, but you'll get it in writing because we're finalizing it over the weekend. For grades four, five, same thing. They'll be working with School-Ache and supplements through H and U, the elementary platform, but it changes. Even though we are only required to do 30 minutes a day, we are going to try to go up to 90, depending on staffing. As you know, staffing is a little more challenging in grades four through five. So we don't like too many combos and things like that, but just be aware, we are going to try to surpass that 30-minute minimum. And the mandate is for students to be four hours a day in asynchronous time. For grades six, eight, middle school, it'll be mostly the connection through the H and U platform because all the subjects are included. And again, the mandate is 30 minutes a day, but we are going to try to get as close to 90 as possible. And like with four, five, the computer or asynchronous time is four hours a day. And finally, for high school, nine, 12, the program again will be H and U High School in combination with our learning management system, School-Ache. The requirement for synchronous time is very minimal, just a contact with the student. But we are going to try to do at least 30 minutes a day of live time and synchronous time of at least 30 minutes a week because of the variety. Because of the variety of subjects, that's why the state basically said, as long as there are contact, we're going to try to surpass it to at least do the thirty-minute contact. And the computer time mandated for students is five point five hours a day. So as you can see, the higher the grade, the more the student will be expected to be on the computer. And now, we will get audited on this. If you remember last year, because many districts didn't even have computers, that auditing process was fairly lenient, not anymore. So this year, I already met with Laco, and all school districts will be meeting regularly with Laco to assure that this is being met, including the provision of logs of our system. So we will be able to check that students are doing the work. That is what we expect not to change. We do get an update on Monday on independent study from the state. Again, because of the fifteen days and the three-day challenges that they are trying to provide us, but we don't expect these minutes to change. Any questions, board members?
I do have a question.
Please.
For Totos, will manage the independent study? Like the enrollment, will it be at each school site? Or will it be a central location in the school district?
So for us, we are right now planning on doing it at each school because otherwise you have to disenroll the student. So give you an example, LAUSD, who has a massive operation, former school that I believe is called City of Angels or something like that. And they are disenrolling their students and putting them on this specialized school. The challenge for them, well, probably not a challenge because they might have a lot of staff. If a student switches back and forth, you have to go through a re-enrollment process. We were hoping to avoid that by keeping our students in their school, still doing the on-computer, because we did it last year. So it's not like we don't know how to do it. But that way, if the school switched back, it would be an easier process. So we're actually facilitating, being a little kinder to students, a little more difficult for us. But it's the right thing that I, because we think some students will switch back. Why do we know that? Well, in the last few days, we've already had ten. Yesterday, one of our principals received a couple of notices, and they asked, what are we doing? We said, let them. They said, we had signed up for independent study after we did a little research and we learned the amount of time the student has to be on the computer and no social interaction. Can we switch him back to live? And we're saying absolutely. So in that case, it was easy.
So that gives them the opportunity to come back to their own regular school?
Absolutely.
Like if they were a previous Lincoln.
Instead of a disenrollment, re-enrollment is their capacity. By then, did they form a combo? We were hoping that we can continue being very user-friendly for our parents, but it is a little more work. So I just wanted you to know that's beginning to happen. It's not happening the other way, by the way. We don't have a lot of parents that say, I told you I was going to stay live, and now I want to go to independent study. What appears to be happening is, I thought I wanted independent study. One parent said, after I talk to my kids, they want to be live. So it's interesting, but I do believe that there will be populations. I spoke with two parents that have heavy asthma. And even though we explained to them that the state has made provisions for shields, with drapes, et cetera, one told me, you know, mom started crying, said, you know, even though I believe my child needs to be with kids, I don't know enough about asthma to feel safe. And I told her, you know, before you make a decision, can I connect you with one of our nurses? Because as you know, asthma does not prohibit students from being in school. I like, one of the board members said at one point, you know, a community member said that masks kill the oxygen and it messes up your brain. Do they understand that nurses, I believe one of you said, or others, are using them many hours a day? And we do get oxygen. We might not get the same volume, but we're not just breathing carbon monoxide. By the way, we would die. So we are getting a lot of questions. And so far, the direction has been, can I go back to life? And so we'll keep trying to be friendly by keeping them in their school.
And I hope like, because I'm looking at social media and people's comments, and I hope, you know, because they asked me, what do you think I should do? And I think every family has to make their individual, individualized choice, and nobody should critique.
Right.
Because I seen in social media, like, oh, why, you know, you're not the teacher. You shouldn't be independent study. And it's like, we, hopefully, you know, we come together with grace and understand each other that everyone has different needs. And it's okay if they need to be in independent study, or it's okay if they want to come, you know, live, that it, everyone's different. And that's okay, because I'm seeing the animosity. And I'm like, oh, my gosh. You know, hopefully, we have grace and understanding that our community, everyone's different. And everyone, belief systems is different. And so I'm not no one to tell somebody, you need to do it this way. It's, at the end of the day, it's their choice. And hopefully, nobody critiques other parents for making that choice. So, you know, hopefully, we're, we're all graceful and, and understanding of each other.
Right. I also would like to reiterate, if, if we can just make it a point that if they do do independent study, they're still part of our district. Because a lot of one think that because they're independent study, they're not, they're not part of our district. And if they do come back, we're not going to let them into our district. So if we can really emphasize that whether they're in our, you know, in-person or independent study, they're all part of our district.
And one of the reasons, board, I appreciate those comments. One of the reasons why we chose to keep them in their school is that it'll be apparent that they're in their school. They're not in some mythical school over here that nobody has heard about that we invented. So I'm assuming the board members are okay with our idea as doing a little extra work and keeping them in their school. And obviously, we will emphasize that. But they know they're in their school, because we will try to keep it that way. Thank you, board members. The final item is the lengthy item. Let me give you background, board members. As you know, our normal course of action is for the board to go through a process of first reading, second reading for board policy implementation. We received notice a couple of weeks ago that the state was going to be providing us at the time, a new board policy. It is now a mandate, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't bring you the board policy on Monday without at least having a chance to have a discussion, as you are accustomed through the first reading process. Now, if you remember, the first reading is simply that we give you the new policy. You, as board members, read it, ask questions, and then we go to the second and final reading, and we adopt. We don't have a lot of choice this time. So you might say, well, Ruben, why are we reading it? We don't have a choice. It's still a courtesy to ask questions and answer questions because we are deviating from an established policy to a new one. But the state did say that it must be adopted before the beginning of the school year. Otherwise, we cannot offer independent study. So what I would like to do, and by the way, this is coming on Monday. So we wanted to make sure there was an opportunity, not just to give you a first reading, but to actually talk about it. Because it is uncommon that the board is mandated by the state to adopt a particular policy.
Okay.
So this time, it felt a little heavy, but we can see why. It does allow for certain things under independent study. If you read it, you notice that vacation was taken out. If you remember, one of the things that independent study would allow us to do, and everyone has a copy, you have the gray that's the established and the yellow bar that's the new one. If you remember with the old independent study provisions, if a student was going to be, let's say, an Olympian athlete, since we've been watching the Olympics, an actor, they were going on vacation, we could put him on independent study on a contract. They would work, and they would come back, and they would re-assimilate into their program. The vacation provision is out. What is in is the provision that under the new rules that we have this year, we must provide independent study for any student where the parent feels that it would be inappropriate for them to be in live instruction. So that's the premise, and I wanted to make sure that everyone knew it's not something that you requested, that CSBA sent us. It's a mandate from the state. So what I would like to do first is, your existing policy is very short. It's one page with a paragraph on back. And if you notice, it basically gives you the same criteria as the new policy. You have to have a variety of independent study opportunities. There is a written agreement, and it is specified, by the way, in ad code fifty-one, seven, four, seven, which has been the code that guides independent study for quite some time. And then there's the provision for student-teacher conferences. This is the policy we're leaving behind. So if you have any questions about this policy, let me know. Otherwise, I wanted to give it to you as background, but this is the policy that will be terminated. Any questions, board members? So if I can take you to the new one, you will see the one with the yellow band. And what you see in it that we usually do to you, so that you can be informed, is we struck language that was part of the old way of looking at the policy. And, and it begins to shape the new philosophy of independent study. So in the first paragraph, you remember, we eliminated the word eligible. Why? Because now for parents, they can make themselves eligible at any time by simply telling us that they want independent study. So you, the board, or us, the staff, through your direction, don't have the ability to determine if someone is eligible or not. Now, this is where I would like to pause because the board is always very good in saying, please look at the specialized populations. Throughout our discussion, and you will see us do it next week, the IEP for students that are our students in special needs drives the instruction more than this law and more than anything else. So if the IEP that a student has requires that they have services that cannot be provided under an independent study format, and you know that many do, then we cannot provide them independent study. So I want to make sure we're crystal clear. That is probably the only thing where parents will be either concerned or upset that we talked to the IEP team. The IEP team says the services need to be provided in person. And the parent might insist, I want independent study. And we are going to talk to the SLPAD, going to talk to the PSYCS, going to talk to the IEP team. But there's a strong possibility that in some cases, we will say, the only way we can continue to provide you FAP is under the IEP guidelines of in-person instruction. I want to pause because this will be the big discussion, I believe. Everything else is optional. Any questions on that, board members? And I know some of you are experts in special ed, so you probably can already envision the arguments we are going to have.
I'm not, I'm not a specialist, a specialist in IEPs, but I can envision it. But I, I believe that's fair, because the IEP is the one that directs the students, that this, the school's curriculum. And I think that the parents probably will be, I'm hoping, happy because whatever is on the IEP, we need to follow the IEP versus us telling them they have to do independent study or, you know. I mean, that's my, my, my point of view. I may be wrong, I'm not, I'm not a specialist. So I would like to hear from board member De Leon, so she has more.
Let me reiterate if I, because in order for me not to make mistakes, I have to make sure I'm hearing what I'm hearing. So we're saying that, of course, the IEP is a legal document. So we'll always follow that. But however, if we're saying, let's say, some parents, whatever the reason is, they decide to go under independent study, we're saying that the services will not be provided?
Not at all. The complete opposite. The services will be provided for the IEP unless we cannot provide the IEP-required services through independent study.
So, for example, services would, would be like, it could be adapted PE. It could be speech therapy, occupational therapy. So if they decide, I'm going to do independent study, they would still get those services?
If they decide to do independent study and they have a specialized service, we would contact the IEP team to make sure that we can provide the services under the independent study format, and then provide them. If the IEP team determines that we cannot provide their services under the independent study format, we would meet with the parent and explain, this is why we cannot provide you the service. And that has to be crystal clear, because the IEP will continue to be the driver of instruction.
Right. And I think like, with our, you know, we've, I think everyone got an email with concerns, and I know there's people, we're humans, well, we like, we don't like change. I mean, I don't mind change, but we do sit in the same seat. And, you know, even when you go to college, you sit in the same seat, and it doesn't say your name, right? It doesn't say like, it's not like in elementary where this is your seat or this is your parking. But we do that as, as human nature. And so people like to know, like, what is my expectations of my student? And sometimes, you know, well, I understand because if you have a student with autism, you, you start priming them. Okay, when you're going to go here, you're going to do this and this and that. And then they're like, okay. Or they're, you're using pictures or whatever the, the system might be, you're preparing that student, right? And so parents, you know, they would want to know, and that would benefit our students. So I don't know if we could make a video or, or something because they're feeling anxious. And then something, side note, what I noticed, and if I had the, all the power in the world, you know, it would have been nice if maybe we had counselors at the, the meeting that we had on Thursday. I'm not a counselor, and I could be wrong. So I apologize if I am wrong. But I felt like there's a lot of people that are hurting because they're either single, and they're like, I don't know what to do. Like, if I, if I have independent study, like, who's going to feed my child? I'm a single parent. And so we're, we're facing in this nation, a mental crisis. And, and so how are we going to, as a district, you know, say, hey, there's, there's this therapist you can see? Because we are in a community that not everyone has insurance, right? And, and/or has access to that. And so I'm like, whoa, side note, we have to say, and deal with our fears and say, you know what, I am concerned for X, Y, and Z. And you know what, it's a real feeling that we all feel, right? Nothing is one hundred percent proof. And so if we could possibly have some kind of, what are our resources? Look into that for, you know, things with mental. I know as a teacher, it was a hard year, and there was a teacher that came in the first time we came back. And I was like, my husband's like, oh, my gosh, he's just like you. Like, you've, you had that, like, you were working day and night, and you were just torn up. And so, you know, I, I, I want to empathize and, and really reach out to a community and be like, we're going to work together through this. And if this is what they're saying that they need, like, let's listen. You know, we might not make the best video, but say, hey, you know what? This is, this is what we came up with. We talked to all the, or maybe it's a different video for each school. You know, here's the, here's how it's going to look like. Because one parent was like, well, how, you know, are they just going to line up at lunch? How is it going to be? And that, that's a real, like, tormentive issue or, or situation for them. I think we need to acknowledge and bring our counselors because they're, that's their specialty. I am not a specialist, but that's what I felt. And so if we could, I don't know, maybe have a study session on how can we, you know, get support for our parents and, and let them know, like, this is, these are, because of course, nothing's going to be one hundred percent perfect. We just have to follow the state guidelines and the health guidelines. And we could just offer, well, if you're going on a taxi, the taxi is going to pick you up as usual. Is it going to change? Is the ratio going to change? You know, what is, what is the ratio now? Is it still going to be one student per car? Or what have you just given?
Yeah, I respect, I respect what Mr. Leon is stating. I support her one hundred percent. Our parents come from various backgrounds. And like she stated, maybe we could have a video for each school. Or, Mr. Perutos, when the students return to school, are our principals going to be, and maybe have like a back-to-school meeting to educate our parents, like with the taxis, cafeteria? Because each elementary school, each school is different. So will our principals be meeting with our parents so they can address the concerns of our parents? And then also, I like, with the special education, we do have a special education teacher at each site, correct?
That is correct. And there are different schools that have different classes and loads. So it is a little different per school, but most schools do provide.
Okay, so our special education teachers should reach out to our special ed parents and state that this is what is happening, you know, what is mandated, independent study and what have you, just so they feel secured. So I believe we're really going to have to give our parents a lot of TLC at the beginning of the year. And so we need to stress to our principals that they really need to have a meeting or, and to educate our parents. And those, and when the principals have the meetings with their teachers, to share with the teachers, this is what's happening, and you are going to have parents' concerns addressed to you. And this is what.
To remind the board, this week, and I believe even last week, most of our schools are doing what they call orientation sessions for parents. I happened to have worked with Lincoln because we had some questions from parents about Lincoln School. So I met with the principal, and they are doing a packet and orientation first week, as well as many other schools. What I will do, remember, we have a principals' meeting on Monday to discuss return to school and the specifics now. I will bring up to them parental mental health. I think it's a great idea. You remember that the board went out of their way to try to create new mental health processes for our population, including a contract with CareSalus. including a contract with CareSalus. Now, it didn't work very well because we didn't really have um, a lot of traction and usage. They didn't market it as they said they would, I believe, because otherwise, people would have used it. But there's no reason why we cannot continue to look at options for our parents. You remember for employees, districts have implemented things like the EAS program that's designed to be um, confidential mental health. When folks have stress, that way they won't feel that the employer knows that they're struggling, which I truly believe in the confidentiality of mental health. So I will ask on Monday what the different schools are doing. And we will, if necessary, look at options and bring, if necessary, um, whatever services we can bring for mental health. If you remember, one of the biggest initiatives from the state for our students to alleviate learning loss is the provision of support systems. So I applaud the board for allowing us to do it for parents and staff. And I will make sure that we bring you an update on that.
I would, just to piggyback off of um, Board Member Martinez and Board Member De Leon, or Vice President De Leon, um, is that we should have a study session on the mental health. And I believe that one should be done in Alondra since we saw how much the population in Alondra. And, and give our input of who should, who should be there. Because I believe that um, many of the administration was, was not there. But to really, really emphasize on the mental health. And so that way, parents could ask their questions. And that way, um, just to bring it out as a study session versus here, because nobody comes here. I mean, there's, there was a big difference between here and Alondra. And so if those parents, you know, if we can do something for them there, that would be very helpful.
If I may add, I want to thank Vice President De Leon for bringing um, mental health concerns up because I've been advocating for that for a long time under the previous admin. I even got in trouble for speaking up about it. Uh, I've also been doing a lot of groundwork myself. Um, I run forward resources, right, to Mr. Frutos. Um, I've contacted people, I've made phone calls. I mean, I mean, because this is something that's personal to me, I've done what I can. So I want to thank her to, for bringing it forward, right? And it is something that we've experienced ourselves at home, right? So thank you. And Mr. Frutos?
Yes.
I want to follow up too because I've shared resources with you. And I've called people, I've used my own time. And this isn't for me, it's for the community. So I hope that you do follow up with Vice President De Leon.
Absolutely. And, and as you know, mental health is something that is important to all of us. Happens to be the area where I started. So it's uh, it's something that I know how difficult it is for folks under stressful conditions. So one of the, the goals after talking to the principals, Board Members, will be to see what systems we have at every school. And the way I intend to address it is to see that at every school, there are some resources for our parents and staff. Uh, regarding doing another board meeting at Alondra, let me work with our counselors and other folks that would be actually presenting, see if there's a, a, a comfort level with that. For some of our folks, the amount of folks we had at Alondra could have been a little overwhelming. So I just want to make sure we don't create a situation for staff that is uh, difficult. But I will come back to the board after we talk to our counselors and what we call our team that cites counselors and other mental professionals to see if we can craft something. My first goal, however, will be to see what is being done at schools. Because schools reopening soon. And then if we need to have a meeting, we'll, we'll do that. So I just didn't want you to be surprised if I don't come back to you with a meeting agenda immediately. We're focusing on schools right now. Thank you very much, Board Members.
Sorry for overstepping, but ladies, I saw that Downey Unified, so they're actually adding uh, mental health sites at their middle schools, right? So I know we do have something at the high school. But I'm really, I was really impressed that Downey Unified really just went above and beyond. And it's now at their middle schools, right? So just, just putting it out there that it is, it can happen, right? It can happen. If Downey's doing it, why not Paramount? So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cuarenta, I appreciate it. So continuing with the, with the policy, Board Members, the other thing I wanted to mention to you is if you notice, the new policy has general independent study requirements that talk about an evaluative process as well as how students will participate in the content. If you remember, in the old independent study, it was truly just to keep the student engaged. Now they are mandating that we continue with A through G requirements. So in a way, the independent study tries to simulate as best as we possibly can the classroom instruction experience. Um, you will be asked by folks as the year goes by, do we have to meet PE requirements? No choice, as you know, is the only requirement in Ed Code. So I, the way we will, in every school district in California, develop our uh, independent study initiative is to make sure that it has a significant amount of fidelity to what we're doing in the in-person instruction process at every one of our schools. I wanted to point out a couple of items, um, because it is important that you know that in the old agenda, that it required a contract. And it's, it's stricken here at the very top. And so you might say, hey, you told us there's a contract, what happened? Well, now there's an entire section on it. If you look at the, at the second page, um, at the, on the, on the, near the top, there is a master agreement area that discusses in great detail what Ed Code 51747 now says regarding the, the written agreements. As you know, now it has to be addressing all the same requirements as in-person instruction. There will be two types of individuals that we will be working with. Um, there is a requirement to have an administrator of the program and one of our folks will be assigned to it. Our, our top choice will probably be Robin Paget because student services has always been the main area for independent study and it can serve us well. Um, if that changes, I will let the board know. But then every student will have a teacher assigned to them that will work to make sure that the contract and the terms of the, of the program for independent study follows the guidelines of Ed Code now 51749, which discusses the conferences that need to be had, the progress that needs to be made, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I wanted to talk to you about that because there are significant differences. And if somebody said, what's the overall thing? Well, independent study now almost needs to mirror the classroom experience. Before, that wasn't the case. Any questions or comments from the board?
I do have a question, Mr. Frutos. Um, we're talking about every student will have a teacher. Are we hiring more teachers or where are these teachers coming from? Because if we're already, you know, every, every class has a teacher and we're talking about all these students being independent study, where are the teachers? Where are the, where are the staff?
So if you notice, one of the items that I put in under independent study is staffing. Uh, we are both hiring additional teachers, but also looking at the capacity of our schools. And some of our teachers are signing up to do independent study because they, one, don't feel comfortable coming back to school live. Or they might have uh, medical conditions that prevent them to do that. So it will be a combination of existing staff and additional staff as, as needed. One of the challenges is that we are, like many districts, getting some of these instructions now to craft our program. So we needed to know what we need to do in order to poll our students. And thus, the survey that we're doing, now that we know that we will probably have over 800 students interested, it allows our HR department to fine-tune the staffing that we need from our schools and from the outside. Um, I can tell you that it's um, I need to be careful. Um, it, it, it is a little bit frustrating because in some cases, we have had folks with a lot of energy within our team working. And uh, and as you know, for a while, we didn't have all our staff. But I need to be patient because I, I have this tremendous sense of urgency of finishing this. But since the information is coming slowly, um, I will be urging our staff to move fast in some of the things like recruitment and selection. And I've spoken to the board about that, so I don't need to say anything more than that. But uh, just don't be surprised if we take a little bit more of an aggressive stance with our own team so that folks are, are recruited quickly.
When we get the numbers, um, can, uh, can you please provide the board with how many teachers we have for independent study and how many teachers we have for um, in, in person?
Absolutely. Not only that, Ms. Gomez, we were planning on doing that at the end of the, of the survey. We will also provide the number of students that are interested in independent study. So it'll be both students and staff.
Thank you.
And will, will we also know how many, how many students per teacher, independent teacher they'll have?
Yes, we can, we can have that.
Okay. Then the TOSAs, um, are they going to have the, their same position? Because I know the TOSAs are pretty much, are teachers that, that have been here longer. And then we have temporary teachers, which under the Ed Code, temporary is a year, but we've had them for more than two years or three years. And they're like, they're just like placeholder from what Dr. Morales had said. So uh, the TOSAs, are they going to remain doing what they're doing? Or are they going to also help out in independent study?
So my, my directive to the team is that any teacher that's out of the classroom, as we try to recruit and select teachers, is available for independent study. And that will be part of our discussion with our principals on Monday, Ms. De Leon. In our district, um, we have a sizable amount of teachers outside of the classroom. And this presents a good opportunity as we embark in independent study to use those resources, even if temporarily, to make sure that we don't have students without teachers. Uh, you know that some of the districts that have started school, notably some of the ones in San Diego like Chula Vista that started two weeks ago, most are starting next week, some like Long Beach are not starting till the end of the month, are having a very hard time staffing. And in some cases, they've resorted to have a teacher do both uh, independent study and live instruction at the same time. We are working our very best so that we don't have that. It's incredibly distracting. And we want to simulate what we did last year, which is teachers were focused on their students. So I will use the resources of our out-of-classroom uh, teachers to make sure that we can staff appropriately for independent study. Any other questions, Board Members? So our next steps are some easy and some difficult. Uh, the, the easy, I believe, is that you will see this board policy presented to you on Monday. Um, we followed the code to the letter. We did not provide in the independent study policy any customized information for Paramount Unified because we want to make sure we're complying with the law. But if during the weekend, you see something in the board policy and you have a question, we've been looking at it for the days that we've received it. So we would be able to answer any of your questions. Um, on Monday, after we meet with the principals, if there are any questions regarding the areas that we discussed, especially if they have um, a connection to the board policy, one of them would be the amount of minutes that we will be asking teachers to be in front of students, we will bring it to your attention at the board meeting. It might make the board meeting a little bit longer, but at least you will have the latest information. Any questions, Board Members?
I don't mind for the board meeting to be longer because this is very important for all our community.
Right.
I appreciate that. Uh, and Board Members, uh, after we finish, uh, if you don't have any guidance, I will keep you for a couple of minutes to give you a couple of updates regarding just district um, staffing issues and next steps that I've discussed with you before. Any other items from the board? Okay. Viviana, this, this, uh, Ms. Cuarenta, we can conclude the meeting at this point?
Thank you. Um, it is now 10:22 AM and we will adjourn this meeting. May I get a motion?
Board Member Gomez makes the motion to adjourn the meeting at 10:22?
Thank you, may I get a second?
Garcia will step in.
Thank you. Okay, I will now take role. Um, Board Member Garcia?
Yes.
Board Member Martinez?
Yes.
Vice President De Leon?
Yes.
Board Member Gomez?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
And Board Members, again, if you can give me a couple more minutes, we'll finish.
Excellent meeting. Very good. Good input.